Okay, so it looks like we're live now, so let's go ahead and get started. Uh, my call is meeting to order, uh, July twenty first, twenty twenty, meeting of Michigan City. Uh, so our regular meeting would have been live, but due to uh, COVID related issues where it being via Zoom. So um, let's start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. The flag up? Is the flag up?
No.
Not.
No. On screen, hang on. Paul?
What?
Yeah. We got flag now.
Yep.
It's up. Alright, uh, pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
You too.
And to their.
Probably.
For his administration. Foundation of their God. Indivisible, for liberty. Liberty and justice for all. Hey, um, Mr. Ball on the roll call?
Uh, Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jigas?
Present.
Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine present and zero absent.
Okay, we have a quorum, so uh, see it's how we're, we were unable to do our regularly scheduled meeting that we were gonna do live and uh, we're doing it zooming. We only, we only have a really short agenda because there was a not, uh, everything wasn't what I consider was essential or safety related right now. So uh, this first resolution, Mr. Ball?
Resolution by title only, approving the extension of the mayor's executive order zero eight twenty twenty, extending the declaration of a public health emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus and temporary closing of Washington Park. And this was introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And uh, just real quick on this, this was an extension on the, the most recent order that Mayor Perry issued. And we could have extended it up to thirty days, but because of uh, influen- I mean, because of input from members of the public and just uh, kind of lack of discussion as far as what, what all should be happening, what's the uh, the extent of the restrictions and, and how, how much longer should they really take place with the council? Uh, it's only for seven days instead of the uh, allotted thirty days which we could. So um, in that time, if we have a chance, we can speak with Mayor Perry if he has uh, desire to extend it past that, we'll issue a new one so that we'll be able to make better decisions with, with the next one if there is to be one. So uh, any other comments on this resolution?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Uh, Councilman Don Prespolinski?
Yeah, uh, I'm not in support, I am not in support of extending the uh, mayor's executive order. Uh, I believe that there's other means that the mayor could take. Uh, possibly, you know, as you mentioned, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick, you know, sit down and discuss things uh, with the council, uh, what our thoughts are, maybe some suggestions that would work. I think that the public uh, deserves to use the beach. And I know that the main concern is social gathering and social contact. Uh, I, I believe that if there were some kind of uh, procedures put in place where Michigan City people that have park stickers on their vehicles uh, for this year, or I guess last year also, that they could come down and use the park. Uh, we could back out people from other communities. And to me, that would reduce the amount of people that are using the park and the beach. And that would take care of the problem with the uh, social uh, gathering. Uh, the other thing that it's doing, it's also hurting the uh, tourism uh, portion of, of the city. Uh, for example, like the hotels and uh, you know, there's uh, suggestions coming out that possibly passes uh, be given to the uh, and this isn't something that we're going to uh, decide tonight. But there's suggestions that possibly uh, passes come out from folks at uh, hotels, the motels that come to the city. And they could come in and use the beach because that's their primary reason that they do come to the Michigan City during the summertime is to use the uh, the lakefront. Uh, with that being said, I think there's other means that we could be taking right now in order to reduce the amount of people that are using Washington Park. But I think we don't need to back off and not let our own residents use Washington Park, the zoo and the other uh, amenities down there that their tax dollars go for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Simmons?
Yes, uh, hey, I've been out there for the last three weekends and I can tell you the, the beach has been a disaster. Uh, and you know, we're not, we're not forgetting that we remain a destination, tourist destination. Um, and we've, I have personally uh, individually been receiving a lot of input how to go forward with this. And I think we should all give ourselves the seven days uh, and, and try to decide what's the best way to go for, move forward with reopening the beach. Uh, yeah, we don't want our taxpayers suffering, no, but we want everyone to be safe. It's incumbent on us to make sure that we don't create a real spread throughout the community. And I can tell you, there has been no social distancing out there at all. Uh, you look, you drive through there and you, and you think and feel that it's the perfect storm for not, for a city widespread. And that's the real, that's, that's very real.
President? Hang on, uh, were you done, uh, Councilman Simmons?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Deitch then, Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
Yes, and, and I agree with Councilman Don Prespolinski. Um, I received multiple um, emails and a couple of phone calls, um, more specifically from residents. Um, not really dealing with tourism, but more about just actual residents on utilization and, and I just feel like if, if, if we don't pass it, the mayor has every opportunity and he should be planning ahead and not just assuming we're gonna pass something like this. Because we need long-term solutions to move forward because this is not something that's gonna go, go away anytime soon. So, you know, you know, I'm in agreement with him that, hey, let's, you know, the mayor needs to do something. And we keep extending um, uh, executive orders that we had no input on. And you know, if we're not gonna have input on them, no reason for us to extend it. He, he knew what he had to do upfront and he could have done that, got the, the right and adequate input and input from the citizens and done it. So if it expires on Thursday, let another one start on Friday. Um, everybody's working from home, got time, just get it done. And if he needs to call some people in or take a survey and do something online, I mean, go for it. I just think that there's an automatic assumption that we're gonna extend these things for thirty days every time. And we need to get out of that habit and, and do something upfront and be more proactive in, in creating an order that everybody has some input on. So I just wanted to say I, I agree with um, Councilman Paul, I mean, Don Prespolinski in that, in that sense that we need a long-term solution and stop kicking the can down the road.
Yo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
Thank you.
And then Councilman Mack.
Thank you. Um, I agree with uh, Don, Angie, Jean. And my, my hope is, my position on this is we, we had seven days from that weekend. That was a craziness down there that we could have met, the mayor could have called us in to have a special meeting to discuss our thoughts on it. So that's seven days right there. Now we have this executive order in front of us and no meeting schedules, no special meeting schedule just to discuss this item, which is an important item, but there are things that can be done. The park board could come out and change rules right away, impose them just as soon as they put signs up there to close the park. They could have said, no alcohol, they could involve a dust curfew. And put up on, because there's already a rule, you're not supposed to have fires on the beach. So I don't know where that happened, but now today I heard from um, a person that they were letting, they were open for parking areas for people to park. Well, I, I don't know, because I wasn't down there, I didn't see that. But my, my premise is that there are things that are very small, but they make a big impact. And we could have a lane for people coming from out of town and root them right out of the park and let the uh, locals enjoy that beach. Because the locals do support the park system. And we, if they have a right to go, I believe that they have more right than anybody to enjoy their beachfront. Now, and they could also impose a parking restriction down there of uh, when they consider the parking lot full, like every other space. There's many, many things that could be done instead of this uh, doing this exact order. So I personally am not in favor of extending that. And I'm in favor of having a, a meeting um, soon to get this, to get this ironed out. Because I have not heard one positive comment from local people. And I was at the barber shop today, I was at Loles. Loles, Advanced Auto, everywhere I went this weekend, I had nothing but negative comments about why they, why the locals can't enjoy the beach. And I think that there are ways to um, let, let the locals enjoy the beach and to curtail any rowdiness. And, and my, my thing is that you ban that alcohol right away. Because you know and I know, the only reason why alcohol was permitted down there is because of all the festivals that they used to have down there. Well, we're not having that, so just ban the alcohol. And you know, that's a bad mixture right there. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick, for letting me say uh, my concerns. Thank you.
No problem, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Mack and then Councilwoman Tillman.
I also am going to agree with uh, most of the previous sentiments. I agree with Don Prespolinski and uh, everyone who says that we should allow this to just uh, expire and don't extend it uh, seven days, thirty days and don't extend it all and let the mayor uh, reassess this entire situation, even if he has to do it weekly. If he has seven days, maybe that's the best option to uh, since this is a fluid situation, address it weekly. But the, the big rocks that I'm concerned of are uh, and why I will be voting no are the words like unilateralism, to where these things are just decided as one and then handed to us to uh, accept or approve without any consultation. Uh, there's a lot of good ideas uh, going around everywhere. I too have been getting emails and calls, they center around uh, elitism because some people look at the marina as an issue being open versus uh, park. And it's very difficult if not, that my, my answer to them was, was there's no real answer to uh, say that this small boat is gonna be able to fish on Trail Creek. Um, so, and I've gotten emails on a lot of the uh, solutions that we've all brought up here. I mean, some of the people are actually coming up with some great ideas of how to manage it. And that's, that's the second thing I'm uh, wanting to address is our ability to manage. Um, there's just so many ideas and uh, you know, there's places that do big festivals, they do big things regularly. And that's just managing a process and managing, and then you come to that with collective decisions. And we're never going to manage our new COVID environment of the beach where there's a big demand from out of town to come. Unless we manage it, we, it has to be managed. And uh, I'm, I'm happy to see the park director and I believe I've got faith in him to do it, the new guy, Mr. Shin. But the, the word ability to manage is really coming down with this. And then just COVID, uh, we're not gonna be done with this COVID conversation uh, anytime soon. Uh, every time the county or the governor comes up with something we do, uh, we're, we're a little different. We need to uh, tailor our, some of our things here. And the last item is park closure, park closure versus city property. I had a uh, email and a phone call dealing with uh, you know, closing the park, which we can close any park anytime we like. But stop two or three on down to the rest, uh, that's just city property. Can we just close city property? Can we close uh, access to Trail Creek, you know, uh, because of city property or can we just close parks? Um, there's so many cans of worms that open up in this, uh, it has to be discussed amongst the many so we can get uh, the best out of everything because some people, some things just aren't gonna work. Uh, but I, I agree with Mr. Prespolinski on the no vote, no extension. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tillman and then Councilwoman Jigus. You're muted, uh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Pretty much everyone has uh, um, spoke on and addressed the concerns.
Uh, we lost you there.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. And um, that they've addressed all their concerns as well. And I actually agree with everyone that has spoke. Um, I too have also received numerous uh, in regards to our, our beautiful beaches and, but yet we have the restrictions even on our own residents in the city opposed to allowing everyone else to come in to enjoy our beachfront. Um, I would, I as well would uh, vote no on the extension. Um, due to that, it could have been executed in a better fashion. Um, if we were all notified or we had got together to have some form of communication as to how we can try to move forward and to implement something that would actually benefit the city residents and, and any um, tourists that is wanting to come into the city. I know some of their concerns or suggestions or recommendations were to um, if we open the beaches, the beachfront back up. One thing that, the first thing that they should do or the Parks Department should be able to do is not allow using the overflow in Federal's Alley. Right there, that holds over how many vehicles there? I mean, that's something that they need to look at as well. Um, but of course, our concern is also making sure that the safety, the safety for everyone within our community that will be utilizing the beach. And if we do have to extend it further um, due to, we hope that the numbers don't extend, but if they do increase, it's not, will it not just be for the beachfront? But what about if we have to go back to phase three to where we have to start looking at businesses and things of that nature as well and um, limiting the access into um, public facilities, restaurants and things of that nature. Um, but this is a topic in a conversation that needs to go further. And I, I agree that this may be something that we have to review on a weekly basis depending on how things um, and the numbers look with the pandemic. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Jigus?
Yes, so it was very interesting that we haven't had a chance to discuss this. I've gotten numerous emails from citizens with good ideas, really good ideas that we haven't had a chance to talk about and see if we can do something about it. For example, I already have a question about Don's idea. If you have that sticker, well, of course, we issued stickers to people outside Michigan City and Ellicourt County. Are those also valid or not? I mean, we have to sort these things out. I heard there were canopies and propane grills on the beach. You know, we gotta eliminate things like that. Uh, and I'm kind of disappointed we didn't get a report from the police on how did it go this weekend? What was it like? What was going on? Like, we don't really know. I mean, I'm not gonna go down there because it's closed. So we probably need to get it updated. And yes, I think we do feel that we are not included in this discussion or decision. And perhaps we need to have a council workshop about what kind of things we think are reasonable, you know, and ask for input from citizens and do that. Like, I am concerned with the virus, but also, you know, the citizens themselves have requested to use the beach. That's all I've gotten is questions about, you know, access to beach. They own property in front of the beach, they wanna go there, et cetera. So I'm not sure what the solution is, but some discussion needs to be happening is my idea.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Alright, I, I think I may be the lone wolf on this one. Uh, but I would vote to an extent. Reason being, this thing is going to expire and I'm just looking down here on, on Thursday night, which means we would open up the uh, the beach for the weekend. And I've been involved with this and been watching this very closely over the weekends just to see how out of control it is down there. Uh, I am in agreement with everybody in the fact that we should be included in conversation to come up with some ideas. Um, you know, I, I felt like I had some input on the very first one that, that we did uh, pass way back. Um, I can't remember exactly when we passed that one, but I did think I have some input on that one. But in regards to what's going on now, after I cut through all the, the email from one side or the other, phone calls from one side or the other, um, in, in my mind, it comes down to we are allowing super spreader events with people piled on top of people inside of Washington Park. If we can get the city, the people to practice social distancing, if we could get them to practice wearing masks, I would feel a lot more comfortable in, in saying, okay, let's open up these beaches, uh, open up the beach rather. But in my mind, from what I'm seeing, these are creating grave opportunities for this virus to be spread. Um, and, and when I think about that, I think about viruses being spread and then they come back, people that come back, even the Michigan City residents that come back into the city, that go into doctor's offices, that go into dental offices, that go back and see their parents, uh, their grandparents and have the opportunity uh, to, to spread that virus to others. Um, it, it shook me pretty hard that five out of the, uh, five out of eight, five out of seven, I think I got the numbers right, that our bus drivers tested, became a positive. Um, we know we've had some incidents in the, the fire department and things of that sort. And so in my mind, it's all about stopping the spread. And I don't wanna see us having an event, because this is gonna expire Thursday, Thursday night. Um, that would allow those people to congregate. Um, I, here's some good ideas and unfortunately, we don't have the chance to implement those right now. Um, I wish we would have been involved and had our, our, our chance for us to cast some real say-so. Um, you know, maybe because it was coming up on the weekend that it needed to be passed right away. Trying to make excuses for anybody on that and maybe we do need to be included. But in my mind, it's, it, it's, it's revowing one of these, what I call a super spreader event for people to be piled on top of people. And it goes all the way from Washington Park all the way to Stop thirteen uh, where, you know, Michigan City ends. So in my mind, after us all said and done, people could talk about their businesses and everything like that. In the end, I feel, I feel like in, in terms of safety, that I need to keep these, these people apart from each other uh, by extending this and then we could sit and talk and work on other ways uh, that we can implement some, some safety precautions. But uh, right now, that's not in front of us right now, but we can definitely get together and do that. So I would vote to extend because of the action, the activities that I've seen at the park, at the beach. Um, to make sure, you know, we're, we're not allowing these people pile on top of each other. Um, so that's why I'm that on it.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, so I do agree with, with all of the sentiments. And hang on, one second. Uh, I, I do think that um, we all have good ideas and I think there needs to be a more uh, broad discussion as far as what should happen, how should, how it should happen, who should be involved, who should not be involved in. Uh, on that note, I did wanna, uh, I'll get, uh, let the rest of you guys make comments, but I do want to uh, ask Councilwoman Deitch real quick. As the chairperson of the Public Health and Safety Committee, uh, do you think you can get a uh, committee meeting scheduled this week, maybe before this order does expire? So we can invite the mayor out and if he has input, we can all be part of the conversation. And then if he wants to issue another order at that point, maybe it'll be something that's uh, more reflective of the the, of the, that we're getting from members of the community as well as where we think it should go versus uh, just a, a individual making decisions without, without uh, you know, more voices involved in the conversation.
Well, that's why I was getting ready to ask you. I wanted to ask the um, Attorney Meyer, can the mayor do another executive order on Friday?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't stop anything by us not passing it. It makes sure that he, he, he's the executive of the city to make some decisions. Now, as far as the Public Health and Safety Committee um, meeting, do we have to um, it's Thursday, do we, we still have to follow the forty-eight um,
Yes.
hour rule regardless of the executive order that the governor has placed, right?
Yes.
Okay, so um, would everybody be available next Tuesday to do a Zoom meeting?
Tuesday?
Yes.
And Attorney Meyer, how can we get public input um, for the meeting?
I don't know. I mean, it's uh, I, I'm a techno idiot, so I can't tell you how that can happen. I guess you're gonna have a separate phone line installed. I know Caleb has done that before for sanitary district board meetings where people can call in and make comment on the phone line, but not, you know, through Zoom.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll get with Caleb. I just did a, did a webinar where we were able to all be on the screen as panelists. And we, um, citizens or whoever can join as just participants in the Zoom meeting uh, without being on screen. So we might wanna look at something like that. That way people can log in and put the chat box up and we can answer questions that way. But I, I'll, I'll, I'll get with Caleb to see if there's something we can do. Because I feel like we need input. I, I mean, it, it does, it defeats the purpose if we just talk to the mayor, but we still don't, I mean, we can get information from the citizens, you know, in advance, but it would be nice to hear from someone in real time. Because I think it's would be nice to hear from someone in, in real time, because I think it's gonna be important that people voice their opinion. But I, I can get something set up.
So on, uh, on that note, uh, what, what comes to me is if we, uh, okay, if this does not pass and the mayor issues another one for seven days, and then we need to get together to possibly extend that or, uh, work with that one prior to the meeting you're having, or would it be after? Because, uh, if we still need to get together again to maybe extend a resolution, if we have a more favorable, uh, order from the, uh, the executives coming out, would it be more convenient to try to get the, uh?
You wanna do it on Friday? I mean, I think people wanna, I don't know, would you all wanna meet on Friday?
Uh, Angie, I won't be in town Friday.
Okay.
So no, I wasn't saying that, but can we do it? Um, I don't know what time you were thinking on Tuesday, but if we were able to do the, a special council meeting immediately following it and then make the decision on that. Uh, Attorney Meyer, how, how would we be able to do that, uh, without, um, having a full resolution, without knowing exactly what the order is? Or if we decide to go forward with the extension of the order, if Mayor Perry does issue another order, would it be possible to do it, uh, that way, so we don't have to come out multiple times?
Yes, you can have a special meeting. You gotta get forty-eight hours, you know, advance notice, uh, not counting Saturday, weekend.
Okay, so if we decide to do the committee?
You can have a special meeting just to, to discuss, you know, the, uh, closure of Washington Park, or something generic like that you could call it. There doesn't have to be a specific, you know, resolution or ordinance, but pending.
So we could, you could vote to extend that without the actual resolution?
He's saying a special meeting just to talk about the closure of Washington Park.
I mean, the public health.
The resolution, um, you know, the resolution just attaches the executive order. So the verbiage is very similar. Now, the question would be whether you, meaning the majority of you, uh, you know, like or agree that whatever executive order the mayor issues next should be extended. Uh, and if it is, you know, I can prepare a resolution in ten minutes.
Okay, so if we do, um, I don't know, uh, Councilwoman Dyche, what your schedule allows? If we do your, uh, committee meeting and then maybe a half hour in between, or following it, we do the special meeting to discuss if we're extending or not after we have it? Or is that kinda out of order, or maybe we should just?
Do you really have to have a committee meeting if you're gonna have a special meeting? It's the same thing.
Okay. There you go, okay.
Quick, what was it, the, what'd you, you say as a date, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Dyche?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay, so here, here, this is one of the things I was just thinking about. If we wait till Tuesday for us to get together, but if the, the mayor rewrites one Friday, we still don't wanna have input?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have time to, to, uh, to, if, I mean, is the mayor on here?
No, I don't see him, no.
I mean, we can share all our concerns, it's recorded. I mean, I think we've all shared, you know, a, a lot of our concerns that we're hearing, and he can watch the video, it's on Facebook, and, uh, I think we've all shared what our concerns are, and, and maybe he can reach out to us or, and, and see what to do. But I think a lot of us are already in agreement on a couple of things. I guess, I think he's getting some of those emails that we got as well. I think I saw his name on a few of them. So maybe, um, he'll take all those things and what we're seeing tonight into consideration and create a new executive order for Thursday night.
So, okay, if we're, um, Councilwoman, uh, Giegus.
We need a motion too.
Done.
I do have another question. So if this, this extension does not pass right now, I mean, the risk is that he's not gonna extend it, and things are gonna go back to how it was a couple of weekends ago with absolute, you know, mayhem at the lakefront. So I'm just wondering, is it possi-, is, is it possible for us to modify the executive order that he made and just say, we're gonna change soon?
No.
No, we can only.
The answer to that is no.
Well, that's unfortunate. Okay, thank you.
I have one, one final comment.
Councilman, uh, President, then Councilman Mack.
Okay. Um, we've, we've had basically ten days almost since the weekend where the problem arrived. Now, we can sit here and talk about a lot of stuff, but the executive should have had, uh, told the park board to meet and start changing some of these rules, because that's, that is, uh, what, what the problem, some of the problem is, and restrict parking. You'd say the parking lot's full at this capacity, things like that, and, and it's closed. The park department is its own entity, and they can pass their own rules. So we've been seeing now it'll be, uh, uh, almost ten days today since that weekend of all the problems. Has the park department come out or been asked to meet for any suggestions? So I'm not, I don't have a problem with the hot seat, but something's gotta give, because we, we need to find, uh, we should have been in, we should have already had a meeting or a joint meeting with the park system and iron this stuff out before we even had, before we voted on this thing. So that's, that's partly in my concern. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Mack.
Uh, just three quick things, uh, that I wanna bring in, and that's, uh, I love the idea of the, uh, Public Health and Safety meetings and using that, uh, platform as a way for us to bring forth our ideas and incorporating the mayor into that. Uh, two, I have total faith that the mayor is going to listen to this, address it, and there's absolutely zero chance that he's gonna, you know, just open back the beaches, uh, tomorrow. I, I, I think he's gonna probably do whatever is, uh, necessary to incorporate us into this discussion, since we've so adamantly, seemingly, uh, decided that we should be involved in it, and we're gonna come up with our own ideas in those committees. And three, on the emails, or not even email, uh, my concerns of open comments are, uh, diluting non-residents with residents. I, I accepted a few phone calls, but they flat out said they weren't from Michigan City. They had different area codes, different places, but I was cool with them because, uh, you know, I don't hear what anybody has to say, and some of those people are stakeholders, even though they aren't residents. But we've, if we're in public, they have to stand there and state the name and, uh, where they're from. So if, if we're just talking about a, a quick meeting to find the issue of, uh, our Washington Park and get Michigan City residents' input only, maybe, uh, even after this meeting or whatever, uh, open up an email, uh, to all of us, so that we can each maybe filter our emails and give, uh, ten or twenty, because it, this subject is gonna be one that's gonna last a long time if we just take live, try to be live with it. So if we give everybody, uh, the opportunity to email us their concerns, uh, to prove or validate that the Michigan City residents, so we can, uh, put a hierarchy on our emails. If it's a Michigan City resident that's proven, you know, that, that, and a great idea that's going, and if it's not, you know, a good idea is a good idea. But, uh, maybe that would be the way that we can guarantee we get a lot of input, uh, and, uh, we can filter out, uh, in hierarchy, MC residents' opinions on how we should do this. So that was it.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Simmons?
And going back to my original statement, I wanna add that, you know, I was very upset like everyone else that we weren't included on this original, uh, executive order. And, and even so, even the park board, where was their input? I mean, I just, I was upset that it happened without input from us, the park board. It wasn't inclusive enough. And, and now, and now it's, it's put in our laps, you know? It was, we had no input from the original executive order, uh, which I thought was unfair, I, to be honest with you. And, and to me, it sounded more like on the emotional, well, uh, you know, is that the way we make decisions?
All right, thank you, Councilman. So, uh, one of the reasons why I did, because we didn't have to add this to our agenda, we, we didn't have to have a discussion about it. It, it was just an option for us to extend it or, uh, bring it to the public. But I did think that it was invaluable for us to discuss this, whether we decide to pass it or extend it or not. I think this was a healthy dialogue, so at least the public and the administration knows where we are when it comes to this. So, um, I'm not sure if there's, um, a motion with this, but, uh, I'll entertain. Uh, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Tillman has something. You're muted, you're muted.
Tracy.
You're muted, Councilwoman Tillman, you're muted.
You're muted.
Oh, boy.
Sorry. Um, I'd like to make a, uh, that we have this set for a, um, committee meeting for possibly Thursday, in regards to discuss, uh, the matters of extending the reopening of Washington Park.
We have the forty-eight hour requirement.
Friday.
Do we table resolutions, um, Jim?
You can table it. I don't know, you probably don't wanna do that on this one, because, you know, time will expire. Or the, the sponsor can drop its support, and if nobody else wants to support it, then the resolution is gone. Or somebody can move to adopt and everybody can vote on it.
Exactly.
I'm moved to adopt.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion to adopt by Councilman Paul Presvalinsky and a second by Councilman Don Presvalinsky.
Um, Councilman Dabney. Mr. President, I just have a question on this. He made a motion to adopt. Is he making a motion to extend? Or is he making a, what's, what's the motion?
To adopt the resolution.
The resolution.
It's a, it's a resolution.
Okay, so there's a, um, a motion on the floor. So there's a motion by Councilman Paul Presvalinsky and a second by Councilman Don.
I'm confused.
Ms. Nyla, I mean, sorry, Mr. Ball on the roll, on the vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Simmons?
I'm confused, there's a lot.
Can we, can we take a step back? It's a resolution to extend the executive order, so you have to adopt the resolution if you want to extend it or shoot it down or vote it down if you, if you don't.
In favor of the extension, correct.
Thank you. An aye, aye vote would be to extend.
Aye.
Okay, Simmons, aye?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Giegus? Uh, Ms. Giegus?
This is the resolution to extend, correct?
Yes.
Um, aye.
Mr. Paul Presvalinsky?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman? Ms. Tillman?
Um, nay.
Nay? Tracy, was that a nay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Sean, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Uh, Ms. Dyche?
Nay.
We have three in favor and five opposed.
Yeah, okay, nay.
Nay. So we have three in favor and one, two, three, four, five, six opposed.
Okay, that, uh, resolution does not pass. Thank you. Ms. DeBaud, our, our first ordinance on third reading, uh, by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section ninety-four dash seventy-nine in division three of chapter ninety-four of the Michigan City Municipal Code, adding provisions regarding traffic warning signs for children with hearing or vision impairment or disability. And this was introduced by Ms. Tillman, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Paul Presvalinsky, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Dyche, and Mr. Don Presvalinsky.
Does any of the, uh, well, does Ms. Tillman have anything to add or any other authors?
No, I don't.
Okay, any other authors have anything to add to this? Councilwoman Dyche?
Well, it'll just move for adoption.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion to adopt by Councilwoman Dyche and a second by Councilman Paul Presvalinsky. Uh, any objections? Uh, having no objections, uh, we call for a vote by, uh, the all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ma'am? We have nine in favor and none opposed. Uh, the ordinance passes. So next we'll be having, uh, no comments from the mayor, we don't have the mayor on with us. Any council comments? Simmons?
Yes, I, I wanted to make a correction. Last, uh, meeting, I announced the opening of Four Eleven, uh, motel. I wanted to make that correction as the correct name, the correct name of our new, uh, inn and suite is Four Eleven Inn and Suites, uh, located at forty-four eleven U S twelve, Michigan City. Website is W W W dot forty-four eleven Inn and Suites dot com. And their phone number is two one nine, two six two, four four one. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Don.
Councilman Don Presvalinsky.
Yeah. A couple of things. Uh, Councilwoman Dyche, uh, with the workshop on Tuesday, and I, and I know you will, it won't, it, it's not gonna take place at four o'clock in the afternoon, I don't think. Yeah, I know, 'cause we have, uh, the executive session with the, uh, fire department negotiating team. Yeah, so we'll be doing, we'll be, we will be doing a Zoom. The Labor Relations Committee will be doing a Zoom at four in the afternoon, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
Because I knew it wouldn't be that early anyway, but I wanted to let you know that. And then just one more thing, and I wanna give a shout out to a group, uh, that does a lot of good for the city of Michigan City. And you may have read about it in the News Dispatch, uh, last week, but their group, it's called the Northwest Indiana Cleanup Course. And they're a vis-, they're a volunteer group that meets every Wednesday somewhere in Michigan City, and they go up and they clean up debris, and they clean up trash that's on businesses, that's on corners. Uh, take for example, out of Myers, out of Walmart, these different spots, and I don't have to tell anybody on the city council, 'cause we're all aware of the different areas in town that, uh, that need help being spruced up and cleaned up and picking the trash up. But anyway, the group, and I just wanna give a shout out to the, the three organizers of it. And the first one is Daisy Lee, and Daisy's an environmental science teacher at Cregger Middle School, and Kevin, Kevin Jones, who's a science teacher at Cregger Middle School, and Emily Stuades, she's an English teacher at Westville Middle School. And she's actually the one that set up a Facebook group to where it's called an N W I Cleanup Corps, and anyone from the public can go on this Facebook throughout the week, and they will tell you where they're gonna be cleaning up at on the, uh, following Wednesday. And I guess they clean up from eight to ten in the morning, uh, and all supplies are, are added, and it sounds like there's about a group of about twelve to fifteen people that are organized in a. that are organized in it, so just wanted to give them a shout out. I think there's more people that need to volunteer on actions like this, trying to uh clean our city up, uh, cause I know if you go out walking and not driving, you really get a better perspective of things that need to be done uh in the city and how uh, you know, neighborhoods uh need to be spruced up, and uh even Franklin Street, when I walk up and down and go for my morning walks, uh, constantly on a daily basis, there's always garbage and trash uh on Franklin Street, and I know the case is the same for uh, for Michigan Boulevard. I don't know why people would do it, uh, of course, I don't like it, but I don't know if we'll ever get away from it, but we just gotta keep trying to make our city uh clean and beautiful for everyone that comes here and everyone that lives here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Council, Councilman Paul Preszbalinski, then Councilwoman Deitch.
Well, I would like to extend congratulations to uh my brother, Don Preszbalinski and his lovely wife, Virginia, uh, they're celebrating their uh wedding anniversary this year, or this week, uh, or I.
Today.
Today, but I was thinking that it was last Saturday or.
No, no, no.
It's coming Saturday, you know, though, cause the days move around on the calendar.
Thirty, thirty-six wonderful years.
Yes, but.
Congratulations on that.
Congratulations, Don, and Virginia, and uh, you know, uh, there's something that I think, uh, a couple of things that weren't mentioned tonight. Are there signs up in Sheraton Beach not to, not to uh proceed to the lakefront? And also, everybody, you, you know, I kinda coincide with the people that feel that there is elitism going on, that who owns the property, that the port, I don't know how much property the Port Authority actually owns down there, or what the park system did on, on different things to accommodate them, but I, I would like to say this, how come they can have their dogs down there and I can't take my dog to the park? And my dog's not a vicious dog, or my dog is muzzle, okay, and I got my baggie with me. Uh, the other, the other thing I wanted to put out there is people who have boats that get on and Trail Creek, they can go out in the lake and then come into the beach. Are, are they, are they kicking them off the beach or writing them tickets? I mean, there needs to be a lot more input into this whole uh situation, really is, and in uh, that's one of the reasons that I voted no, because I think there was enough time to huddle prior to this executive order, to have everybody's input and especially the park department, and get, and get that alcohol out of the park, put that curfew in at dusk, and have that lane, and there's gotta be a way, oh, one other thing, someone said to me, how are we gonna get people not come in the park? Well, I guess then you have a policeman down there and say, you're being asked to leave the park, simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch?
I was gonna say for the workshop, I, I, instead of a committee meeting, cause I think this is important enough that we all need to voice our opinion, um, that it should be a workshop and a joint workshop with the police department and the park department, I think we need um both of them uh represented at the uh, at the workshop on Tuesday, I'm hoping six o'clock will work, but I think we need input from them, I'm not sure fire, but I know police and the park department for sure, that we really need um someone from, from there, from their leadership teams to be there to, to speak on behalf of their, and even their board, um, as far as the park department, so that we can receive input from them on, you know, they, you know, on what, you know, they're seeing, you know, and with the police department, how they're gonna manage it, um, we've, we've gone down that path on the lifeguards, they're, they're supposed to be there anyway, so um, we might as well have that full discussion, because this is not going away anytime soon. Um, other than that, um, I know that this is through um August third with that, with the city hall, first of all, I just wanna say that I'm, you know, I'm praying for, you know, anyone who's been sick, you know, we've had family members and friends again who have um succumbed to, to COVID, and, you know, hope everybody's wearing their masks, doing hand washing, all those good things. Um, at some point here shortly, um, outside of this beach, um, uh, this workshop, we'll have a Public Health and Safety Committee meeting. I know that Councilman Don Preszbalinski had some health officials, I think we need to go ahead and get something scheduled, um, you know, sometime in the near future so that we can hear from some experts to maybe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Talk a little bit more um to the public and get them on a, uh, get them on a Zoom meeting and provide information to the public um as we progress, because over these next couple of weeks, we don't know um if the, if the governors, you know, a lot of governors are rescinding or, or diverting back to a prior phase, companies are doing it, um, so I think um we're gonna see um over the next couple of weeks what these numbers look like, and, and they may impact this, so we need to start making decisions now um for the future of how we're gonna run business and um how we're gonna deal with our budget, because our budget is gonna be definitely impacted by um COVID and moving forward with the, with the uh spending and the riverboat spending and help, and then our services that we provide, so um, so Tuesday, six P M. I'll turn the paper work in tomorrow.
Okay.
President?
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Tillman, and then Councilman Simmons.
Um, it's in regards to um being under the executive order to where uh essential businesses and that you're able to um approve the finance for the budget, and I just have one concern, and that was looking at the Board of Work Payment Register, um, there was a tree that was cut down on private property due to that, that, um, it was said that the tree, it was a dead tree, but again, it was removed, moved by the city, paid for by the city. And so on this, um, the transaction amount, it shows listed seven thousand three hundred dollars. Well, they also, they did do their three uh quote, three estimates, and they went with A one logging, which is on the um, the reg, the payment register, and it showed on there, the total was for five thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm just curious, um, what was the additional twenty-two hundred dollars for?
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilwoman, um, that may be something, maybe email uh Chief Harris, who's the president of the Board of Works, he may be able to give you some um more insight on that particular thing, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, council, was there any other council? Yeah. Councilman Simmons?
I just FYI, I understand Blue Chip let, let two hundred and sixty employees go this week plus another thirty retired, so that's uh three hundred, three hundred people that are being put out, uh, out of the door.
Yep.
Out the door. Two hundred and sixty unemployment for sure, I don't know about the retirees, but just the, just FYI.
Thank, thank you for that, Councilman. Uh, any other council comments? Any other council comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
No, Mr. President? I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Councilman, uh, Paul, uh, Don Preszbalinski?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. President, but this uh, uh, just came to my mind, I believe uh next Thursday is when we're gonna have the, was supposed to have the double track uh workshop, I think that was gonna be at the senior center, right, to talk about the parking garage, and what was going on there, pardon?
Yeah, I think so, that was the.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, I just want everybody, I, I, I want the council members that, that when you come there, you know, or however it's gonna happen, if it does happen, that we really have some serious questions about what, what the cost is gonna be to operate a parking garage, who's paying for what, and what are gonna be the long-term liabilities, cause this is where we're getting into the nuts and bolts of this double-track project that where the city's gonna be stuck paying for things that we don't wanna be, get stuck with, and this is what's gonna affect our budget as the years, uh, you know, the next couple, you know, five, ten years, whatever it may be. So I just, I'm just encouraging everybody to really give it some hard thought, we have some uh good questions in there, so uh, you know, we know exactly which avenue we're going down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, just a real quick, uh, to Don, uh, to respond to Don there, I was sitting in on a meeting with the uh folks from NICD, and I have an email here which I'll forward along to you, that if I recall, I read this email probably about two weeks ago, a woman in a neighborhood of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year would be what the city would be responsible for, and that's up until we get a chance, if we want to start charging in that parking garage, um, but I'll send you the email, it's pretty clear, it's about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars uh a year, um, if I'm not mistaken, on the uh, the cost that would be coming out of this city, because everything is funded now, um, in terms of the building of the garage and, and everything like that, but operating about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, and the, and the number's sticking in my head, but I will send you the email, um, but that's without us charging for any parking, um, if I'm getting that right, I don't wanna continue to talk and, and give a, a false fact here, uh, but I'm almost certain that's the number now, uh, but I'll get you the email, if the rest of the council wants to see that email, I'll get it to us, well.
Uh, thank, thank you, Councilman. All right, there's a motion to adjourn.
President? Uh, Fitzpatrick, I would draw that motion, and I would like to speak.
Sorry, Council.
With Don, with Don's comment about the uh double-track, I don't know what Nick does gonna have to say, but I think that we need to have our own workshop.
Yep.
Our own workshop where we're asking the questions and find out what the cost is gonna be, and if there's an alternative method to not to close down all these streets, because I don't think a lot of people are looking at the cost of uh, say, uh, you know, try, how are you gonna make a cul-de-sac on Elston Street, on Manhattan Street? You're gonna have to buy additional houses, and remember, you gotta have that cul-de-sac big enough for a fire truck to turn around in, now don't we? Or an ambulance, now don't we? And also, you're gonna be running freight on Eleventh Street, so how many of those utilities have to be run or uh through a reinforced pipe underneath there? These are all things that were never answered, and I don't, I think people were promoting this thing as a wonderland, in that nobody even talked about a simple thing that I asked, what are the additional two floors gonna cost that the city's gonna be responsible for to build on top of the uh existing garage? So anyway, I think that's a good idea that we do have a workshop among ourselves, not with Nick Duh and the mayor, and to find out, in our city planner, and find out what the cost truly is and where we're going here, because, you know, people, we, we're not gonna have any extra money for years to come, that's point blank, so I, I'm sitting here wondering, are they gonna initiate special legislation so we'll put a tax levy in all these counties that they're in? You know, that's something to think about, to, or for us, to, to front, to front this thing.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I do have one comment, so just to the general public, uh, COVID isn't over, I know we wanna get back to uh our routines and, and getting the practice of uh doing things on, on a more scheduled basis, but as we can see, things are not getting better, they're actually getting worse, you know, they're gonna start ramping up again, so we have to be mindful of that as we're out, out in the public, you know, be respectful of each other, be respectful of the safety of yourself as well, make sure that you're maintaining social distance while you're out in the public, make sure you're wearing masks whenever appropriate, uh, just be, be courteous to each other. I know that people are wanting to make this a political issue, whether you're wearing a mask, you're for this side, or if you don't wear a mask, you're for this side, how about we all be for the side of keeping everyone safe? I think that's the most important thing, and uh with all these other issues going on, we have this big thing that's constantly impacting everything, because we were, we lied at night, but because of new positive cases going on, we have to continue to adjust and make modifications just for the safety of everyone, so i- it's very important that people do the right things, you know, whether it's something that's uh inconveniencing you for a little bit, I mean, contracting COVID or someone you care about contracting COVID is gonna be a lot more inconvenient than wearing a mask for ten minutes in the store, so uh, I think that there's much more to be said on this, and I'm looking forward to these workshops and our upcoming discussions about this, hopefully the mayor is able to uh get a broad conversation started with, with all of us as well as the other relevant entities, and uh make sure that we do the right things going forward that's beneficial for the public at large, and not to really just put these rules on everyone that uh may not even get the goal accomplished and, and just set things back some, so uh with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn by Councilman Paul Preszbalinski and second by Don Preszbalinski, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you, have a good night, everyone. Be well.
You too.
Bye-bye.